This is. The zoning board meeting has been called to order, the opening statement. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Being held electronically via Zoom on March 23rd, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such a notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on March 18th, 2022, and has been posted to the municipal website. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2022. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on the window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, would you take the roll?
Okay, Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Ken?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Floyd?
Here.
Kenenbaum? Stein?
Claudia, I see Mr. Stein in as an attendee with his hands raised. I believe he is here.
Yep.
Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen? Mrs. Schreiber?
Here. I see George has now joined us.
Yeah, I'm here now. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. We have three resolutions to resolve before we move on to our applications. The first resolution is Z21-132, 19 Marion Road East, Block 4703, Lot 42, R5 Zone. May I hear a motion to approve? Or questions?
I move to approve.
In a second?
I'll second.
Claudia, would you take the roll?
Coulson?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Floyd?
I think.
No, not Mr. Floyd, I'm sorry. Nope.
No, 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 no. Remember on this one, we have, we had two motions.
That's right.
So on the first vote, motion for the C variance for lot area, Michael, you can vote on this resolution because you voted in favor of it.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna have two. Two roll calls of vote for a motion to approve the resolution. That's all I have.
And I will make sure, Claudia, that when I add one more roll call vote paragraph to this. So I'll make sure I'll get that over to you right after the meeting, so.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Floyd, Mr. Stein?
Yes.
One second. Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Thank you.
The third resolution is Z21-130.
Wait, no, we're still on 19 Marion Road East, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the next vote you had was to approve the C variance for the front-facing garage without a step back. And we divided them into two motions. So we need to take a roll call vote on that motion as well. And that's the one that Michael can't vote on because he voted no. He was opposed to granting that variance. And if you look in the resolution, you'll see that, that it first says roll call vote on motion to approve C variance, then roll call vote on motion to approve C variance for front-facing.
Garage.
Yeah, without step back.
Do we need a second or a new?
Yeah, we need a motion on that one in a second.
All right. Anyone like to do that?
Motion approved. Change Savage.
Second.
Who's second? I'm sorry.
Stein, second.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein? George?
Yes, yes, please.
Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So now the second one. Correct?
Yes, 29 Lee.
This is Z21-106, 29 Lee Avenue, Block 6905, Lot 31, R9 Zone, WJHD. Any questions or have a motion to approve in a second?
I will provo Floyd.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Coulson.
Thank you.
Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The third resolution is Z21-130. This is 131 Mountain Avenue, Block 6804, Lot 27, R2 Zone. May I, any questions or a motion to approve in a second?
I'll move provo Floyd.
Thank you.
I'll second.
You take the roll.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the applications. Karen, are we in order?
Yes, let's go. We have the first one, which is 238 Mount Lucas Road. The noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, Derek, would you like to present the case?
Excuse me, we, we had a request from the attorney. The attorney for the applicant to move the applications around so that 63 Van Dyke can be heard first.
Anyone object to that? Okay, if not, then we will consider 63 Van Dyke Road, Block 4502, Lot 1, R2 Zone. Karen, are we in order?
Yes. Noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction. And so I'll just swear you in, Mr. Bridger, for this evening. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? Eric?
Eric?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Notice the mistake on my memo. Sorry. So Roger and Natalia Dasevsky are the owner applicants. They own 63 Van Dyke Road. They're seeking a use variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D1 to allow the continued use of a two-family in a zone where such use is not permitted. Zoning staff was notified of trash. Issues at this property and upon further investigation, it was revealed that the property is being used as a two-family while there was no record of zoning or approval construction of such use. The R2 Zone only permits single families. It does permit flats and, I mean, accessory dwelling units. They could either be detached or, or part of the main dwelling. However, this side, this property does not qualify as a accessory dwelling unit. The owner purchased it in 2018 and was under the impression that the, the property was a, the two-family was a legal permitted use. In terms of the tax records, it appears that this has been on the tax records since approximately 1967. It was, that's the record we have there. We just don't have records that it was ever legally approved through zoning or through the. Construction Department. It's been inspected since approximately 1995. First for the Housing Fire Safety Office, then the first record of a registration was received in 1997. I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm all mixed up tonight. I apologize. The owners, Roger and, they registered the house when they bought it. And it was registered shortly after they purchased it in 2019. And prior to that, there was no record of the property being registered with the rental housing bureau. So the grant for the variances is a, it's a D1, it's a use that's not permitted in that zone. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. As you're, you're aware with the use variance, it does require that the applicant show some special reasons and it does require a five out of seven affirmative vote of the board. So that's my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Any questions for Derek? Mr. Kennedy, are you the representatives?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee. You'll, and first off, thank you for the courtesy in reversing the order tonight. You'll hear from me from three applications. And you'll also hear from our planner Jim Kyle for all three. The first two, just as Derek mentioned, are D variances for what I'll call loosely existing non-conforming uses in the, in the zone. Two families that have been historically used where when Derek did his survey, it turns out that no one could find the approvals for them. We do have two folks, if we could elevate as panelists, one is the applicant themselves under the name Roger, and then Jim Kyle, our planner. And you can leave Jim up. He'll be giving planning testimony for all three of the applications. In short though, as Derek said, this is, these are Princeton folks here who have at every turn, you know, sought inspections. You'll see a dump truck of information about how long this has been used as a two-family, going back to the 60s. Then all of the permits that they've pulled and all the inspections they've had in, in registering the property and its, and its use. As Derek mentioned, this was, came about because one of their, one of the tenants some time ago in moving out, didn't do a great job in, in clearing the property, but they've since remediated that and they're, you know, prepared and are good, good landlords here. I still don't see them up. I believe they're still in as a participant under the name Roger. If we could.
Okay, I did this promoted. It should be coming.
There we are. Welcome. Thank you for, for, we, we've got you moved on to the other side here. Before I introduce you, I'm gonna ask, since we have our planner as well, if Karen, the board secretary, board attorney could swear all three of them in.
Sure. Mr. and Mrs. Dasevsky and Mr. Kyle, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Roger and Natalia, if you could, in a minute, I'm gonna put some exhibits up, but if you could introduce yourselves to the board and, yeah, just give a minute to, you know, talk about your, your connection to the community here.
Well, I, I work in Princeton for more than 25 years. I'm attending in Princeton Hospital. My office is located on this street right next to. The property. My office is on Bun Drive. We've lived around this area for quite a long time and. Consider ourselves to be closely tied to the community.
So well, if, as is our practice, we send in some slides in advance. If it's all right, I'd like to share my screen and we can have this whole thing marked as our, our one set of exhibits tonight, if that's right, Karen?
That's fine.
All right. Thank you so much. So I'm gonna take you and the board through a, a bit of a tour here to orient ourselves to the, the property that the applicants purchased. First, this blue arrow here, I guess if you could maybe orient the board, that's Van Dyke Road and around the corner, I guess where your office is on, on Bun Drive there in the R2 Zone, but that arrow points to the, to your property?
Yep.
Yeah.
Here, here we have an overhead aerial shot here with, with the property in question in blue. Here on, on slide four, we've got a, the survey of, of the conditions as they are on the property and as they were when, when the applicant purchased it. I'm just gonna note something that our planner will mention probably later on, but the R2 Zone is a three, excuse me, is a one and a half acre zone. This is a three acre property conceivably could be subdivided or support more development than is currently, you know, on here. Next, here as we move through the slides, we've got a closer up picture here. Maybe this is a good time just to ask you guys. So when you, when you brought the property, every, everything that you had seen from the municipality and, and the seller was that it was a, a two-family? Have you made any other changes to it since?
No.
No. So everything was clearly indicating that this is, you know, a two-unit property. Only, only permits, as you mentioned, Ryan, were always kind of implying, you know, two permit property. We went through kind of all the standard steps with zero reason to suspect of anything other than a two-unit property is what we're looking at.
Got it. So zooming in a little bit, I guess here we've got some, some side views of, of the property. This one on the left here that shows, and if you can kind of see my. Arrow, that's the, the front door to get to the second floor unit. Is that correct?
That's right.
And, and how does one, and how about for the first floor unit? Where, where's the door for that?
If you see those trees on the right-hand side, on the same picture where your arrow was, if you walk around those trees on the side of the building, there is a completely separate entrance.
Excellent. So in, in, you know, kind of trying to get some information for, for the board, we, we sketched out here. So here's a, a kind of a picture of the. Of, of the, the home kind of oriented, you know, to line up with the, a floor plan that you did. So outlined in yellow, that is the first floor unit. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I did the sketch. I mean, I tried my best, but I'm not an architect.
No, I think you did a good job. There's an architect on a later application. I don't know if you're gonna take his job fully, but I think this, this helps the, the board see. So for the first floor unit, you'd enter, is this where the front door is for the first floor essentially?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a side entrance and then there is. A living room. On the side of the living room, there is this common utility closet that applies to both units. So it's not part of the first floor unit. And on the left side of the living room, there is an, that's an entry to a second floor unit. So it's not connected to the first floor unit. And the rest of the first floor belongs to the first floor unit.
And the tax records show that the, the building itself is about 4,200 square feet. So each floor is in the 2, 2,000, 2,100 square foot range, but the first floor is actually from an apartment perspective, small in that because these two chunks have been removed and aren't really part of that apartment. Is that?
Yeah. I, I tried my best to measure it, but as you can imagine, I don't have all the right equipment. So it's an estimate measurement. Yes.
All right. So with those spaces removed, maybe in the 1500 or 1600 square foot range for the first floor apartment, is that sound about right?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving upstairs to the second floor. This is a four-bedroom unit upstairs. Is that correct?
Yes.
And looking at the picture on the right, you'd enter in through that, what looks like the, you know, the main door to the, to the building and come upstairs and you'd be in this living area when you come up. Is that?
Yes.
So next, we're going into a bit of the, the history here. Derek had pulled some information. We had found some more information is, as well. Here we have the, the permits, we believe, from 1967, when the first floor bathrooms were added and we think it was turned into a two, a two-family. Here you've got a 1968 tax record that, that was the first time we could find that it was converted. As you can see, we blew it up here, conversion to apartments. And on the right here, 1968, and that's been, been taxed that way ever since, based on the tax records we can find. Here we've collected, I know Derek mentioned, you know, the, the municipal inspections, but when, when the home was purchased by the applicants, these are the things they got, you know, that showed it was a two-family from a fire perspective, as well as the, the CO that was granted. And then here is the rental compliance certification from, from Princeton when they registered it as the new owners and landlords to. To, to comply with the town's requirements. Here, you know, sometimes some people kind of, you know, sweep things under the mat. That's not what these applicants are. They've done a lot to this property just in terms of upgrades. And every time they've done it, they've, they've pulled permits and it's just kind of a, a bit of a list of all the times that the town has been out there since they bought the property, but kind of things that a two-family have had, for example, so that's, you know, they replaced the two water heaters and pulled permits for that. The two separate HVAC systems, the water system, their oil tank removal. It's a lot of construction, guys. And, and then when they purchased it, there already were two separate PSCNG services, but the permits for when they, and inspections when they, they pulled these for the upgrade to a, a two amp property. Or 200 amp, excuse me, property. And just a, just a few, as, as we get, you know, to turn over to our, our planners, a few kind of wrap-up questions about the property, you know, currently you, you rent it each floor separately to, to long-term tenants? Has that been the practice since, since you've purchased it and from the prior owners?
Yeah, there was always the two nice families. We, for me, might have had one period when it was around COVID. That was a, a longer term rental, but everything else is families. In partnership, we have two families. And when we purchased it, it was a two family rental also.
Um, and, you know, Derek mentioned that the reason why this came to their attention was when one of your tenants moved out. They didn't do the best job of, of taking their trash with them. But other than that, have you had any issues or concerns raised about the property to you?
No, I think what happened is when they moved out, it was also the COVID, in the middle of COVID. So maybe they had tough time finding somebody, but when we found out that that's a problem, we found the garbage man to come within two days and clean everything up.
Got it. All right. So, you know, the applicants will certainly be available to answer any of their questions about the property, but maybe now would be a good time to, to move on to our, our planning testimony. Ultimately. You know, we're, we're looking at this in, in a couple of ways. Ultimately, this is a use variance application. You know, we do need five votes here because there, while there's a lot of information about a long history of this property, likely predating the current zoning, that's perhaps a different case. And, you know, if I had a box of, of leases that showed it was consistently leased for the last 50 years since it was converted, I just don't have that. You know, it's, it's a pre-existing non-conforming to show that, that it was continuous. And never abandoned throughout that period. You know, if, if we had all that information, we would, we would show it, but we have what we have. And it, and it seems, I hope you'll find it's a lot. But one way of looking at this is a, an almost pre-existing, long-term non-conforming use. Another way, I think you'll, you'll hear to look at it is while it does not comply with the ADU ordinance, it comes close. You've got two separate entrances. Those are allowed in the zone now. It's just that the bottom unit is a little bit too big to be an ADU. So we're looking at a D variance. And then finally, just I'll note that, you know, we're not looking to subdivide the property, but from a density perspective, it does support, could support two, two separate homes here from a, from an acreage perspective. So with that, I, I, I'd like to introduce our planner. I know you've heard from him a lot in the past and you'll hear from him a lot this evening. He's, will be here for all three applications. But with that, I'd like to introduce Jim Kyle to ask him to briefly, because I know you've heard it many times, give you, give the board the benefit of his background and expertise, so that I can have him accepted as an expert this evening.
We accept James as a.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. So I was retained by the applicant to review the planning issues associated with this application. Met with counsel and we discussed it, reviewed all the information that the board has seen this evening. Also reviewed the ordinance and the master plan, reviewed Mr. Bridger's memo, and I also went to the property and, and inspected it. So this is Block 4502, Lot 1. It's also known as 63 Van Dyke Road. It's located in the former township. It's on the north side of Van Dyke. It's just east of All Saints Road. It is in the R2 Zone. And as Ryan had indicated, it totals about three acres. We also have a tributary of Harry's Brook that runs along the western side of the property to the east of All Saints Drive. Property currently contains a two-story, two-family dwelling. And as, as we've discussed, it's an upstairs-downstairs configuration. There's also a parking area that's located on the eastern side of the structure. All of the surrounding land uses in this immediate area are residential in nature. So as we've discussed, we do require a D1 use variance to allow the continuation of this existing two-family. And we're required to demonstrate both the positive and the negative criteria to prevail in that case. And on the negative criteria, we have to demonstrate and enhance quality of proof under the case Medici v BPR. And that's that the grain of the variance is not inconsistent with the intent purpose of the zone plan. And that proof must reconcile the use continuing to not be listed among those permitted in the R2 District. So in terms of the positive criteria, I do think the site's particularly suited to the proposed use. I think primarily, as we've discussed, this property has been used this way for decades. It likely predated the ordinance, which I believe the township ordinance was 1968, but we're not exactly sure, you know, when. So. The fact that it's been utilized this way and it's successfully integrated into the neighborhood, I, I think makes it particularly suitable. We have adequate parking at the side of the structure for the two-family use. There are no other changes that are required to the site. So the use can be accommodated in a way that the site will remain as it has been for some time. For this particular lot, we also have a, a pretty isolated structure. As you saw in those aerial photographs, there's a significant amount of vegetation on both the west, the east and the north sides. As you drive by this property, you, you kind of get a little peek-a-boo, peek-a-boo view of just the one side of the structure and a bit of the parking area, but in large part, it's not really visible from the roadway. And we have good buffering to the adjacent properties. So I think for those reasons, the site is particularly suited. I think there are also, there's a purpose of zoning that is promoted by the grant to the variance in this case. And that's purpose A, which speaks to the general morals and, and welfare. So this provides an affordable option and an alternative. So this provides an affordable option and an alternative to, to single family. Um, you know, there's a significant amount of discussion, um, particularly in later planning documents. So if you review the two thousand seventeen reexamination report, you know, there's discussion about, you know, affordability issues, uh, within the municipality and, and you know, it's something that we all know. So this, um, really kind of keys in on a lot of the, um, purpose of the ADU ordinance. And that's really kind of the municipality's most recent planning stance on housing issues. So when we look at that ordinance and its purposes, and again, we're, we're not seeking relief from the ADU requirements. Really, the only one that we don't meet here is that eight hundred square feet limitation. But more telling are the purposes of that ordinance, and it was, um, providing for more efficient use of housing stock, providing more sustainable housing options that respond to changing family needs, smaller households and increasing housing costs, and environmentally friendly housing choices with less average space per person and smaller associated carbon footprints. So from a general welfare perspective, the grant of the variance here really achieves a lot of that um, housing policy that was set forth and, and that, and the purposes of the ADU ordinance. And again, it was kind of reiterated in the twenty seventeen reexam, you know, highlighting this issue of affordability, trying to provide a greater range of housing options, uh, for more diverse population. So I think that's really the purpose, uh, that's promoted in this case. In terms of the negative criteria, uh, first addressing any potential impact on surrounding properties. Again, the site's long been utilized as a two-family. So any impact associated with this use has long been occurring with no issues that we're aware of other than the, the garbage issue with the tenant which brought us here. Uh, we have adequate parking provided for both units, so as we said, there's that parking area to the east side that is more than sufficient for a, a pretty significant number of automobiles. The appearance of the site will not change, and if, you know, as demonstrated in the visuals that Ryan put up, the dwelling reads much like a single-family dwelling, there's really no outward indication uh, of the fact that it's a two-family dwelling, and again, it's very isolated, um, barely visible from Van Dyke Road and it's well-screened from the adjacent properties, so I don't think there's going to be any substantial impact on the adjacent properties, uh, from the grant to the variance here. In terms of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the Medici enhanced proof, um, while it's not specifically expressed in the master plan, the likely intent of not permitting two families is to address issues of density and neighborhood character. Um, you know, the twenty seventeen reexam and, and those before them really talked about, you know, preserving neighborhood character and, and you know, that's something that's of great importance. We had the neighborhood standards that were adopted, uh, a few years ago that, that aimed to, you know, address that as well. But there is discussion in the twenty seventeen reexam report about the need to provide middle-income housing and also maintaining a range of housing opportunities to ensure a diverse population at all age and economic levels. The reexam really represents the most recent policy direction of the municipality, so these statements, they serve as a useful guide in considering potential impact to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Um, as to this particular site, this, again, this two-family use has existed since at least nineteen sixty eight, it may even predate the ordinance. Um, but it's also worthwhile, as Mr. Kennedy pointed out, that this is a three-acre lot in a one and a half acre zone. So again, we didn't assess the feasibility of a subdivision. Uh, but from a density perspective, it fits within that density range that's permitted in the R two district based on lot size. There's no change to the site, there's no addition to the structure needed to achieve the configuration, again, it already exists. So any concern over the impact to the character of their surrounding neighborhood is, is really minimal at best. Nothing is going to change out here, um, outwardly that, you know, that would be perceptible to anybody in the area. Now, I think, um, again, we're not seeking relief under the ADU ordinance, um, but that, you know, there is an intent to provide secondary dwellings, uh, on properties. And but for that eight hundred square foot limitation, this property would meet those ADU requirements. I think when you look at the purpose of the ADU, again, it was, this was born out of the twenty seventeen master plan that identified this need for more diverse housing. I think much of the rationale behind permitting ADUs is pertinent here because it's, it's essentially what we have. The purpose of that ordinance was to support more efficient use of existing housing stock, provide sustainable housing options, uh, and offer environmentally friendly housing choices with less average space per person. So I think, um, you know, given those policy statements that were in that, you know, in that ordinance, and this kind of runs in that same vein, I think those are pertinent points for the board to consider. So I think given all this, um, it's my opinion, we can demonstrate the enhanced proof under Medici, it's not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinance, particularly given the, the housing policy, uh, issues that we've discussed. And I think we can reconcile it largely based on the fact that this property has been used this way for a significant amount of time. Uh, we don't suspect that there's any significant impact from the grant of the variance. So I think that's really the best way to reconcile the grant of the variance in this case. Chairman, that's all I have in the way of direct, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Kyle?
If, if you could tell me, if someone knows, what is the square footage of the first floor? How far does it exceed the accessory?
We calculate it, um, at about fifteen hundred square feet, so, uh, it's, um, considered, it's, 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 the four points are twenty one hundred square feet and there's about a six hundred uh, square foot piece of the first floor that's, that's really not part of that unit.
Okay. Thank you, so it exceeds the eight hundred by a lot.
It does.
Yeah, and there, and there's unfortunately no obvious way to, um, reconfigure the units in a way that would be meaningful to, to both, to, to swap proper, uh, square footage.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, can, can I ask the applicants, uh, when you have a opening for an apartment, how do you advertise? That you have an opening?
Um, we use a different options, we advertise on university website. So our last two families actually were, one was a, a Princeton professor and another one was a Princeton resident who found us on this website. And before that, we used the, uh, um.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Um, not really, um, uh, I, I, again, I, I, just in, in a quick summary before we, uh, and, you know, subject to maybe responding to any, uh, if there's any public comments. Um, uh, I think as Mr. Kyle said, you know, in looking at the, the, the positive and negative impacts, there is a lot of confidence, I, I hope the board can find in that this has been here for, uh, as long as, as most of we have been, if not longer. And that to the extent there were any, uh, negative impacts, the, the, uh, the neighborhood and surrounding, um, uh, properties are, are, you know, this, this is the neighborhood's statement, it's been here for such a long time that, to the extent there was anything negative, it's, it's there and been there and then, uh, everyone is used to it, but beyond that, we haven't really been able to identify anything particularly negative about this, uh, this setup. It's a group of people who have kind of done right by their obligations in the town and a, a piece of housing stock that makes sense. Um, perhaps on its own merit would actually support for new construction, uh, something like a two-family. Um, but there's a additional element of the length of time it's already been there. So, uh, I know every application stands on its own, uh, but to the extent there's a, a concern with, uh, essentially approving, uh, two families anywhere where that's not what the zoning is, uh, this is certainly very different from that situation.
Uh, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy, I, I don't know if you looked back at any of the old zoning ordinances. Was this use ever in compliance with a prior only, a zoning ordinance?
There, there were some, um, uh, uh, and a lot of effort was made to, to find that out. Um, uh, with the property that we'll hear about next, we did find some evidence that there were two families permitted. Um, there was a, uh, the township did prior to ADUs have this flat concept, though. Uh, ad- admittedly, I don't know that this particular layout would have complied with the, um, the, uh, the most recent pre-ADU flat concept, when it was, you know, the original records from sixty seven, sixty eight kind of mentioned, like, oh, they added a, a flat to it as if that was a thing that was permitted at the time. Um, it doesn't seem to be that it, if, if it was, it's in a way that we don't currently understand.
So from what you could tell from your research, this has been zoned, single-family, at least since sixty seven?
Um, I, I, I don't, I don't know if I can prove the negative, um, I, I know that it's currently zoned that way and that, um, it was, while not approved by, in any zoning capacity that anyone could find, um, it was approved by the, the town from a construction perspective. Uh, so I don't know that that necessarily means that, um, there wasn't a time when a two-family was permitted or if this was some type of flat that was permitted at the time there either. Um, if we, if we had that, we'd probably point to it more, uh, we were closer to finding something like that in, um, uh, uh, for, for the, the next application, but again, the, the, it's not, it's not particularly clear that that was ever the case.
George, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question about a bit of history, when was this built?
Uh, tax records show nineteen forty seven. So again, best information we have, it was built then, and then either sometime before or right at nineteen sixty seven, which is the oldest record we could find, uh, that's when that second unit, the second floor was converted into a, a unit.
Was there zoning in nineteen forty seven?
George, could you speak up, it's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, my question is, at, at the time it was built, what was the zoning, if any?
I, I don't know that there was zoning, I, I think, and maybe Mr. Bridger can help here, but I think the township's first ordinance was nineteen sixty eight.
I have a record of a nineteen fifty five ordinance.
Oh, you do, okay.
So, I know sixty eight was a seminal year, I think that's when it was, you know, like, reorganized and there was a big, uh, reshuffling of it at that time. So that's when most of the dates reference nineteen sixty eight, if you look at the sections under the.
Mr. Kyle, your testimony that the house is built nineteen forty seven, is that based on records you found with the town, or what, what's that based on?
It is, it's based on the tax record that, uh, Mr. Kennedy had put up in his presentation. Uh, and it notes the, the date of construction is forty seven.
And prior to nineteen sixty seven, there's no record of it being used as two-family, or is simply we don't know?
No record that we have, um, I'll, I'll be honest, I've, I've, I've done some similar cases in other towns and it's, it's, the reason why we brought this as a D variance rather than attempting to show that it was pre-existing non-conforming use is that, you know, this is, this is almost the gold standard of, of finding old stuff, um, and it's really not, you know, it's pretty spotty at best. So we have nothing prior to nineteen sixty seven, sixty eight. Okay.
Thank you, uh, Derek?
Just, I mean, the records are murky on these cases, you're relying on handwritten tax records, but the tax records do indicate that the house was a garage warehouse and it appears to be converted in nineteen fifty seven. So it's been there, I think forty seven, when you said was a realistic date, and there's obviously been changes to it over the years, um, but it, it seems in the, the late fifties, it was converted to a single, uh, to a, to a house, so.
Michael?
Yeah, I, I did notice on the, on the, uh, construction-related documents that were attached, that, uh, it does reference that new stairwell was put in. So that would lead to be, to believe that there was an original stairwell, uh, well, you know, prior to that, and then they rearranged it to make it a two-family, I don't know that. Um, but, you know, I, I would think that the stair, the stairwell that was put in was to make it a two-family. Um, I would also note, um, just something that struck me, but, you know, we really don't know the answer to the zoning. The owner of this property at the time was a real estate agent, was Ann Stockton of Stockton Realtor. Um, one of the grand dames of Princeton, so something, something tells me, uh, she wouldn't have tried to circumvent existing zoning, but once again, can't prove that, but she was the owner, a real estate agent.
Thank you, Michael, Mr. Kennedy, anything else, or?
One question, Mike.
George?
Yeah, a question for Michael, if you noted the date of that stairwell reconstruction?
It's on the sixty seven, sixty eight, um, sort of application backup, there's, there's a handwritten note there.
Okay, I have a question, um, in the collection of, uh, permits, there's a, I guess it's a twenty eighteen, um, building permit, wouldn't that have triggered, uh, a zoning review? In twenty eighteen?
It was interior work, so we only get called into it if, oh, kitchen renovation or bathroom, we're not really.
Got it.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much, we'll now move into public comment, are there, if anybody would like to make, anybody from the public like to comment, please raise your hand and we will switch you. Seeing, seeing no raised hands, uh, Mr. Riot or Mr. Kennedy, would you like to, anything else?
Thank you all again, uh, I know these are interesting, uh, cases, both with the, the history of them, uh, but again, uh, um, while we think this stands alone as a, um, by itself, as, as a D variance, as a, as a good candidate for the reasons that Mr. Kyle testified to, it also has the benefit of being there for, uh, decades and decades and decades, both mitigating or confirming that there's no detrimental impact because this is what the neighborhood has been, um, and further adding a mitigating factor that, again, while every application stands on itself, uh, I, I think that additional, the, the multiple decades of existing use should, should give some comfort that, uh, this is not somehow um, uh, uh, opening the door to changing, uh, uh, the, the zoning, um, in these, in these, so again, thank you so much. Um, and, and appreciate your, your time here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, uh, any further questions for the representatives? See none, we'll move into the executive session, uh, how do you feel? Any comments? Oceans?
Well, I, I'm wondering if we were to approve it, would it be, um, with a condition that it, 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 it has to just remain as it is right now? That it's not approval for, um, a, a new construction to family then?
So a, as far as the condition goes, I, I think I understand the concern there, we're, we're not loaning the property to a two-family that a new duplex could be built or something else could be built. Um, uh, for this use variance, um, and, and expansion, for example, or, or, or other change of the building, the significance would require, um, returning to the board for, uh, uh, you know, another D variance for an expanded, um, non-conforming use or an expansion of the D variance. Uh, if, if there's a way to phrase that in the approval, certainly, uh, we'd be amicable to that. But I, I think that the clarity that this is not, you know, the board somehow, uh, blank check rezoning this property to be any two-family, it's a recognition that this particular one, um, is permitted in this case. Um, and except that's a condition you want to articulate in some way, uh, we'd be amicable to that.
Karen, do you think you can articulate that?
I do, I do.
Thank you, thank you, Michael.
Yeah, um, my, I can see approving this, for me, it's more based on the fact that the town has taxed it as a two, a two-family, I, I think, and with, um, sort of the, all, all the inspections, what I do worry about, and I, I don't want to happen, is for our approval, if we approve it, um, to be based on or state some of the things that it's, you know, consistent with the, we approved it because it's consistent with the general welfare or because it's providing the affordable option, you know, the town has zoning in place for that. So I would not be voting for it because of that. Um, or that it's close to an ADU. Um, I would be voted for it and I would hope that an approval would clearly state that we're doing it because of, it was taxed that way and it was inspected that way. Because otherwise, any applicant can come in and say, I have a sufficient lot. I have, and I want to, you know, you should give us, let me do a two-family house. When it's, the zone is one family. So I just want us to be clear, if people feel that way, that, you know, we're not ignoring the zoning, we're not saying that it's consistent with the intent and purpose of, you know, the master plan. Yes, you can say it is, but it's not complying with the zones that the town has set up to do that. So, that's my...
No, I agree. I agree with you, Michael. I don't, we don't know whether it was ever approved or not approved. But it certainly was inspected that way, and it certainly stood in the record that way, so. I agree with you. Donna, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, I also think that Michael's absolutely right, and I completely agree. Is it possible to approve it with the condition that it not be expanded?
Yeah, I think, Donna, that's what Mr. Kennedy had just indicated, that this client is comfortable with this approval being limited to the existing two-family dwelling. And that it can't be expanded or replaced with a new building unless the applicant comes back. Because part of it...
And I think that's...
It's been that way for so many years at this size and...
And ultimately, in granting a devariance, even I think without that language, that would be the course anyway. You'd be back here to expand a non-conforming use or something of the like, or a modification of a use variance. So I think what you're saying is consistent both with, you know, with with the reality of this application, as well as the, you know, what would happen if you just frankly approved it without the condition, that would be the effect.
No, I'm actually asking if it's appropriate for us to go beyond that and say, we want you to agree this is not going to be expanded.
Well, Donna, I mean, if they wanted to expand, then what we're telling them is you would have to come back to this board and get now another variance. So, I mean, the idea being that if you said, it's difficult to say to an applicant, I'm telling you, you can't do anything else, even if you come to us and you ask for variance and the board could deny it and say, no, 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 we're not, you know, we're not giving you a variance. We agreed you could keep this two-family structure. If you want to tear it down and build a bigger one, no. Because we still view this as it is a non-permitted use. It's not allowed in this zone. But this application had aspects to it, which made it unique. But it was not a matter of kind of opening the door to say, hmm, you know, we'd like to add an addition now. That would be great. Or we want to tear it down.
Okay.
We could pull something else, so.
Donna, does that answer your question?
I understand.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? George?
But it's sort of a thought experiment. To deny this, would there be any barrier to, as Ms. Casey said, them tearing it down, building a nice big house and an ADU within the regulations for ADU? And essentially achieving perhaps even a greater density than they have now?
I don't, I think they'd be within their rights to do that. They have three acres.
Yeah.
Anything else? Motion?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second with the conditions that we discussed.
Okay.
And I agree with Michael's points about what our basis should be for the decision.
Okay. Any other comments? James?
I agree. I agree with what Brittany's just said and Michael's points as well.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Claudia, will you take the role?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Bolson? Ms. Bolson? Sorry, yes. Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Schreiber?
Yes. Approved? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next case.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well...
Mr. Kennedy, are you also, are you now ready to do 238?
I am. I see we have Ms. Chen. There's a second tower. If you move over, Mark McConnell over as well. He's the other half of the ownership for 238 Mount Lucas.
And...
We don't really have the other, his wife, if they're both going to be on separately.
Who is, what is Ms. Chen's first name?
Connie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, Connie.
All right, I just promoted her. She'll be here in a moment.
A different Jen, that's the second version of the board member on there.
Okay, so we're now ready to, next application is 238 Mount Lucas Road Block 5404 Lot 20, R6 Zone. Karen, are we in order?
Yes, everything is in order.
Thank you. Derek, will you present a case? You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Connie Chen and Mark McConnell are the owners of 238 Lucas Road. It's located in the R6 Zone in Princeton Township, former Princeton Township. They're seeking a use variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55 D1 to request to allow the continued use of a two-family in a zone where such use is not permitted. This property was brought to my attention by a previous discussion on this property, and I determined that, again, it didn't have zoning approval. Tax records indicate that it has been a two-family since 1970 through the tax records, and it's been inspected by the Housing Fire Bureau of Inspection since 1995. It was owned by Mr. Federico. And it appears he moved in to one of the units in 2011. And his address, at that point, the inspection stopped since it was owner occupied, which is a requirement with a two-family. There are notes on the property record card. Again, they're scribbled. It looks like it was converted at some time to a... It's unclear when it was converted to a two-family. But there is a note that talks about a flat, but it doesn't speak of when it was, and I couldn't find any information on the flat, but there is a note on the property record card. It looks like, I think it was built in the mid 30s. But that's my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address it.
Thank you, Derek. Karen, do you want to swear in, Mr. McConnell and Ms. Chen?
I will. Mr. McDonald and Ms. Chen, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, do you want to proceed from here?
Absolutely, and I believe I caught in there from Karen that you guys have jurisdiction on this one as well. That I apologize. Thank you. Again, maybe we'll be slightly more efficient with this one. I know that Derek bundled these together. They were kind of unrelated, but the same issue, and it made sense to hear them both on the the same evening. They both found their way to me and to our planner here tonight. Connie and Mark are, as Derek said, the owners of what has been, since the 70s or 80s, a two-family on Mount Lucas. We'll go through in a minute, you know, the history that we found and the reasons why we believe it fits without any kind of detriment to the neighborhood. And very, again, similar to what you just heard, so I think we can, we still have to technically make a record, but truncate Mr. Kyle's testimony a bit. With that, we do have one, again, group of exhibits, and with that, I'd like to ask Mark and Connie to unmute themselves and just introduce themselves as, you know, as members of the community and their connection to Princeton as the owners of this property.
Mark, you can go first. Yeah.
Yes. Well, so Connie and I are the owners of this property. I'm a, I teach at Princeton University as a senior lecturer in the math department. Connie does most of the work as a landlady on this property. I've got to say, she's a very caring landlady. She's always looking for ways to help the tenants, and I'm proud of the work she does.
Yeah, we bought this house like two years ago. So, and then I think this is, we registered with the township. That's during the inspection. Then they told me in comeback says it wasn't, it was not a two-family, so we were surprised. But then I talked with Derek and I talked with Mr. Ryan, tried to get everything, you know, property with the township.
Thank you, Connie. Mark. So similar to the other application, we're kind of orient the board to what we're talking about here. Connie Mark is confirmed, you know, I guess we're pointing to the property here on Mount Lucas here. Then as we zoom in, the aerial map, you can kind of see the neighborhood in its context. And then, you know, we, here's the street view and the survey showing the home on the left. Again, as far as any kind of major changes, none of the none of the conversion or anything with the property or things that you've done, this is how, as it was when you purchased it?
Yeah, we didn't do any expansion.
And you do have tenants at the property now?
Yes, yes.
Just zooming in a little bit, to the left here, I guess this is Mount Lucas fronting, or you can see the one side of the property in the rear, and on the right, you could see the parking area and the driveway. Again, there's a street view, so you can see it from Mount Lucas itself in comparison to the neighborhood view. Connie or Mark, I think now we're looking at the house oriented, kind of perpendicular to the street, but with a floor plan. So could you maybe walk us through for the first floor unit? This is another top and bottom two apartment house. What, you know, what what the first floor is like, how they get there and...
Yeah, so the first floor from this map and the door coming from the left, there's, I don't know if you can see. Yeah, it's from the left-hand side.
Yep.
The top, the top is not, the top is just this room have a little porch just for this room. So the door is in the left-hand side. Yeah, there's a door coming in for the first floor. So, and this area is the living room and the kitchen is here. And then that's the bathroom, and then there's three rooms, one, two, three rooms.
All right. And then this part here that's marked out that...
Yeah, this part is the, for the, from front, you go to second floor, that's the stair, go to the second floor.
Got it. And so looking at the photo on the right, that front door that fronts to the street, that's actually the way to get to the second floor.
Yeah. So that's, yeah, this is the second floor map. And the door coming from the stair going up, then the rest is at the bottom. And that's the room, that this room have a little porch. And then, so this is the kitchen area, and then this is the living area.
So we pulled up the tax records we find as far back as we could go, that it is used and taxed as a 1,600, excuse me, as a two-family, going back to 1960. Here, this is the type of record we were able to find for both of them, that this, as part of the tax jacket, they have these inspect, from the tax assessment inspections, and we that we found the addition of the flat and the fire escape as being added in 1980. So consistent with what Derek found and believe, we think, at least the late 70s for this being used as a two-family. And I'm just going to scroll back a few slides just to perhaps show up this, Connie, this photo here on the left that shows the rear of the property, that's the fire escape for the, so that item that was added in 1980 is, was a safety item for a second egress from the second floor. The, again, as Derek put in his report, there was a gap of housing inspections when it was used as a owner-occupied unit, which is another reason why perhaps it would not qualify as, even if we could find all the records, as a pre-existing non-conforming for the entire portion. But here we found in 1997, certainly municipal inspection as a two-family, going back that far. This one was slightly more sparse, but, you know, pretty clearly used consistently through, from the 70s and 80s to now, as a two-family. We also found just one other piece here. The oldest back I could find is from an aerial photo from the system that we were able to subscribe to from 2004. Does show it exactly in the same condition, the the driveway, exactly the same way, the parking area, exactly the same way. Unfortunately, we couldn't go back any further in the Wayback Machine. But ultimately, that's at least a good, you know, measure of how far back this exact condition has been. And our belief based on the records that the configuration of home in this case is at least to that inspection in 1980. Connie, before I turn things over to our planner to summarize, hopefully concisely, now that we've heard it once, his testimony, anything else you'd like to to add about the property that maybe I missed?
Oh, no. No, you pretty covered everything. And then there is enough parking lot for both the unit. And then they working well with the neighborhood. And then, so I haven't had any issue.
And the tenants you have now?
They are, so last year I had a visiting faculty. And right now, they are mostly post-docs and visiting scholars, yeah.
Thank you. Unless there's any questions for the property owner, though, obviously they'll still be available, I'd like to move to our planner's testimony, who I would again like to offer and imagine, for the record, if you'd still agree that would be acceptable as a planner.
We will. We will accept him.
Thanks, man, too. Thank you.
Thank you. So I was retained by the applicant to review the planning issues associated with this very similar application to the one the board just heard, met with counsel. We discussed it. What visited the property, reviewed the ordinance and master plan, as well as Mr. Bridger's memo. This is Block 5404 Lot 20, also known as 238 Mount Lucas Road. It's located in the former township. It's on the west side of Mount Lucas Road. It's just north of Mans Grove Road, and it's just south of Ewing Street. It's located in the R6 Zone. It's just shy of two tenths of an acre. And it currently contains an existing two-story, two-family dwelling. It's... It's again, as we've discussed, configured as an upstairs downstairs, and then there's a parking area in the rear. Uh, as Mr. Bridger noted in his report, this lot does comply with the requirements for the zone district, and we have primarily uh not primarily, all uh residential uses surrounding the property. So we are requesting a D-one use variance to allow the continuation of the existing two-family dwelling. Again, demonstrating both the positive and negative in that enhanced proof on Medici. So really, the the positive criteria here, I believe the site's particularly suited uh as it has been used as a two-family dwelling for many years, it's successfully integrated into the neighborhood. Uh, we have adequate parking in the rear of the structure for the use. There's about four parking spaces roughly in the back. And there's no other changes required to the site, so the use can be accommodated in a way that the site will remain as it has been for some time. In terms of um purposes of the land use log in purpose A, many of the same things that we discussed in the last case um promotes the general welfare and that provides a more affordable option and an alternative alternative to a single-family use uh keying in really on a lot of the purposes of recently adopted ordinance, uh more efficient use of housing stock, uh more sustainable housing options, changing family needs, things of that nature. In terms of the negative criteria, the first prong and the impact to surrounding properties, again, long use, at least nineteen eighty as a two-family, so we have over forty years of use in that way. Uh, so any impact that we have here has has long been occurring, and again, no issues that we're aware of. We can provide adequate parking for both units, and the appearance of the site will not change. So as you saw from the images, uh, you know, this dwelling is very consistent with those that surround it. It reads much like a single-family home. Uh, other than, you know, maybe the parking area in the rear, uh, there's really no outward indication of the fact that it is a two-family dwelling. So I don't think there's any chance that there'll be substantial impact to surrounding properties from continuation of the use. Terms of the intent, purpose of the zone plan and Medici, um, you know, again, while not specifically expressed, the likely intent not permitting two-family is to address issues of density and neighborhood character. Again, neighborhood character being one of the main goals of the master plan and some of the recent planning documents that have been prepared by the municipality. Uh, two thousand seventeen reexam talks about, again, middle-income housing, maintaining a range of housing opportunities. And the reexam again presents that policy direction of the municipality, you know, in the in this vein. So the things that we discussed previously. So as to this particular site, again, two-family use since at least nineteen eighty. Um, there's no change to the site or addition to the structure needed to achieve the two-family con- configuration. So any concern over impact um to the character of the neighborhood is minimal at best. I think, uh, again, this is another situation where, you know, it's fairly, th- this one's much closer, I think, than the previous application to meeting those ADU requirements, but it exceeds that eight hundred square foot limit. Um, but for that, this property could likely meet those requirements as well. So here, uh, again, the ADU ordinance, while while we're not seeking relief in that regard, uh, it provides a lot of the rationale and and recent policy directive on the municipality. Um, and I think a lot of those are promoted by the grant of the variance in this case. So I think, given all these facts, and and I want to address some, you know, Mr. Floyd made an interesting point, and I and I want to tell you, I I probably wouldn't be here arguing either of these cases if they weren't two-family uses that have existed for decades. Um, you know, the quite frankly, I I agree with what Mr. Floyd said. I think, you know, the we have to make a case, so I need to present the positive and the negative, but I think at the end of the day, you know, really, the reconciliation comes from the long-time use of this property as a two-family. You know, again, we're not, we're not sure about, you know, previous approvals, can track down all the information, but I think that that's really the easiest way to reconcile the grant of the variance in this case is just the the longstanding use that that's been there uh that we've demonstrated through the record. So, um, other than that, um, Mr. Chairman, I didn't have anything else in the way of direct. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any any questions for Mr. Kyle or Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Kennedy, do you want to give a?
Again, um, I didn't and don't want to repeat myself too much, but I know we do need to create a record here. Um, uh, it it this is a, um, while again, we'll have the testimony and record about the D variance. Uh, I think there's can be a lot of comfort in the um one, the amount of of approvals that have happened by the non-zoning elements of of Princeton, um, whether they be housing inspection, construction, uh, fire safety and 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 the like that went into making this a two-family starting in the late seventies at the latest, and that that four-plus decades of use makes it very different from a a a greenfield uh case for a two-family. While again, I think we we meet the criteria there, it is it is very different. And what we're asking this board and what we kind of caption this application as as a continue, a variance for a continuation of the existing use. And and it's that length of time, that reliance over the years, the taxing, um, the the regular inspection, and then the 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 time-tested nature of it being used essentially by uh in the neighborhood uh as as a reconciliation for the lack of detriment that makes this something that we feel should be approved uh um and and is a distinction from um just uh a buildable lot and someone coming in and asking for a two-family or a multifamily or a, you know, some other type of use that's not permitted. So um, I again, I thank the board uh for your time and consideration tonight. Um, and certainly able to ask any or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, we will now open it up for public comment. Are there members of the public who would like to speak? If so, please raise your hand and we will move you over.
Hello?
Um, yes, sir.
You may go first. My name is Vadim Boguslovsky.
We need to swear you in, sir.
Ready, ready. Yeah, sir, if you would give us your address, please, first.
Uh, the address is two thirty-two Mount Lucas Road.
Alrighty, and we just need to.
We're immediate neighbors. You can see us on all those pictures.
That that's fine, sir. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I I mean, just, yeah. Uh, you you know, first of all, I would admit that I don't fully understand all the consequences and repercussions of, you know, this this being granted. Uh, but I I I would like to maybe you you know, impose some conditions if if possible. Uh, I I I would definitely like to not to see short-term term rentals here. Like, for example, like exactly across the road from both of us, there is a three-family unit where one of them is used as Airbnb. And and it's extremely, you know, how do I say, buzzersome? Because people are coming and leaving, you know, all times of the night, and their headlights are shining straight into our bedroom. And I mean, it's just a lot of constant change of people. You know, you last year, there was student parties up to three AM. Uh, and I just don't want something like this happen here. I I understand that right now, you know, the tenants are good and all that, but uh, say, you know, some years from now, this property is sold and still is it multifamily using, somebody converts it into one of those, it 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 does buzzers. Um, this first and the second, it was mentioned here about the number of cars on the parking lot. I agree, this parking lot can easily handle four cars, but maybe we can put some restriction that no more than that. You know, because they they all of this is a traffic right under my bedroom window.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Haynes, would you unmute yourself and make a picture and go? Thank you.
Ms. Haynes, could you could you give us your address, please?
Yes, I live at two-two-three Mount Lucas Road.
Alrighty, and do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, so I live uh across the street from the property that's uh applying. Um, I've been there since nineteen ninety-two, and that property has always been uh two apartments in that time. Um, for many years, the residents were students uh from generally from Westminster Choir College. Um, there really have been no particular problems that I can think of that have occurred over those years. I I found, you know, they were fine neighbors. Mr. Fredrici was an excellent landlord. When he wasn't living there, he was stopping by every day, making sure everything was just right. Um, and um, I really think this property adds a lot to the character of the neighborhood. The the block uh that we live on is um a very varied block, and that's it it is in a little microcosm. Uh, exactly what the uh planning board has uh set forth is the goals in the master plan to have diversity of uh individuals and and people of different incomes uh living in in proximity to one another. So I I welcome this property. I will agree with Mr. Boguslovsky, however, about the Airbnb. Uh, there actually are two Airbnbs uh in on that on that site at two thirty-three Mount Lucas. Um, and sometimes they're rented for a few months at a time. Sometimes they're rented for a very short-term, you know, weekend or a week or two. Um, and there's absolutely no regulation of those of that of that use of that property. As far as I know, their town has no no restrictions whatsoever on those kind of rentals. Um, the the two units are in one building, both owned by the same individual. They're both owned by the same individual, although they're individually titled condo units. Um, in general, I haven't found it to be a big problem. I don't have the headlights coming because I'm on that same side. So I don't have headlights coming in and out of my door. Um, my biggest problem is that I keep uh my packages keep disappearing. Occasionally, I lose a a delivery because it's delivered to the wrong address. So for some reason, two-two-three and two-three-three are too hard to keep straight, apparently. Um, but um, but
Okay.
Uh, you know, I I would like to suggest that um this seems like a very difficult way to address the problem of of a, you know, somebody complaining about trash, to have to to end up at a zoning board hearing and go through all of this. Um, I I would love to see the town be able to get its records better harmonized so that zoning knows what the tax office knows and the building office knows because um, and and I and I I hope that this board, I know when you do an annual report every year and and it's uh advise the uh the municipality, the municipal governing body of issues that you think might be need to be addressed. Uh, I'd like to see that issue addressed. I think I think uh much as Mr. Ryan deserves his good living, uh, you know, this this does seem like a um uh uh the hard way to go about it. So I I would urge you to try and find a way that makes it work better.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else you want to add to that? I don't want to cut you off.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the community like to make a comment? Not seen any other hands. I'll now end the public comment, uh, Mr. Ryan or Mr. Kennedy. I'm sorry.
I'll I'll respond to anything, Mr. Mr. President. Um, uh, so thank you again. Um, and uh just just to be clear, uh, the um the applicants are uh their tenants are uh standard year-to-year tenants. Um, uh, and uh they have no uh intention of of doing any anything else, there being a problem like some of the the neighboring has. We probably join Princeton in in, you know, wanting to figure out how to how to regulate that. I I sit in a capacity in another town that unfortunately doesn't yet have that problem, but you know, it's the dealing with that is difficult. I also appreciate very much, um, uh, you know, the town's effort. I know it's tough for the applicant to have to come here for this. Um, but I'll say that uh your staff from on the on a modern basis does a phenomenal job. Um, uh, much better than other towns. Um, uh, you know, it would be wonderful if, you know, it it records were perfect going back to uh to to the fifties, uh, and that would have saved these two applicants probably a little bit of money and uh and an evening. Uh, but I I'll say that uh working in in other towns, there's there's not much more you could expect, unfortunately, from a municipal government than what you guys have. Um, and and working with Derek and the staff has been um, very pleasant, you know, and absent finding that that magic bullet. Um, there's really nothing else we could have asked for, unfortunately. It's just an unfortunate situation, and and you guys can't change the zoning rules, so perhaps an administrative um solution for this would would make sense, but um uh that's that's for council. So again, thank you so much um for your consideration on on this one tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions from the uh zoning board to the representatives, uh, Michael?
Yeah, quick question. Um, I I thought I heard, but Mr. Kennedy or the applicant could tell me that sometimes you rent to visiting professors.
Yeah, but these yearly um yearly contract, I don't do Airbnb. I don't do three-week stuff or one-week stuff, no. No, I didn't.
No, I didn't ask that.
Yeah.
I know sometimes visiting professors, I'm not saying in your case.
Yeah.
Sometimes visiting professors only come for like a quarter of a year or a half a year. So less than.
Yeah, so far I'm pretty lucky. I haven't happened to deal with like a two-month, three-month lease, no. Once I went, the first year I got the house, there is one visiting scholar, just have a six-month contract. I did one six-month contract, but then the the rest is yearly contract.
Okay. You know, I I think, you know, me for one and maybe others on the board and your your neighbor, you know, raised that question, not specifically to you
Yeah.
that you try to stick to a one-year contract. If that's what you would like, that's great, because uh that's what I would like to see. I've I've lived in an apartment building in town, um, where visiting professors um did come and the landlord who is popular um had a contract with the university, so they were rotating people coming in and out.
I see.
On on short term. So you heard a neighbor express some concern that it not be that.
Yeah, the I think the neighbor concerns mostly, they don't want like a party house.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I I really, I don't want that too. So I try to make sure they they, you know, um, they work.
Perhaps if there's, um, if there is something kind of in between, uh, you know, I I I know Karen's probably perhaps addressed this before, but um something that reflects that, but would still give the flexibility of a, you know, the a a a month-to-month or or longer actual tenancy versus some type of, you know, rent the whole house out for for a day on 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 uh regen weekend and throw a big party.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how we would. How do you regulate that? Um, personally, but anyhow, any other questions for these representatives? Hearing none, I will close this session and open the executive session, and now we can talk among ourselves, have a motion and a second. Uh, whatever you'd like, whatever your pleasure is. Michael, you want to give the same talk you gave a couple of minutes ago?
Um, I would just briefly say I, you know, would hope that we would, um, if we approve this sort of base our approval on the same issues or points that I raised the last time. And that Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Kyle this time also stressed um the importance of the tax, the history, and and not so much um the master plan intent. So that's all I'll say.
Thank you. I agree with you. Uh, any other comments, Donna?
No, again, I I agree with Michael. He's right.
All right. Any other comments or emotion?
I'll move approval, Michael Floyd.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I I'm was muted. Can I jump in or is it too late?
Oh, you can jump in.
I just wa- I just was wondering if we are empowered and so if we wanted to address the concern about how many cars might be parked there. That. That was raised by the neighbor or if that's not within our purview, I'm not sure.
So is there, um, the if if they don't park on the street, they parking in the the building parking lot? They can park one or park, you know, whatever is in the parking lot.
I'm I'm sorry, uh, we're in the, we're in the executive session now.
Yeah, Cotty, well, we'll, um, we'll address their their comments so that this is, this is the the board.
Okay.
Now, yes, yes.
Derek, is there a maximum number of cars that can be parked in that lot?
Oh, you mean. Excuse me, I'm sorry, um. Trying to look at the survey. I mean, it it looks like it accommodates four or five cars. At least four, you know, how many bedrooms are in each unit? Buddy?
Three, I believe it's three.
Three bedrooms in each unit.
I mean, I think it's a reasonable request, but on the other hand, it's also limited to four or five. And what are we gonna do? So you can only have four, but if somebody's visiting and they pull in there, they're not allowed. I mean, I sort of an unenforceable kind of. The only thing they could do is make it a lot bigger if they wanted to, but they they have to come to us for that. So, um, I I think it's a good question to you, but I don't think it's something that we can necessarily legislate.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Any, is there a second to Michael's motion?
Also going to sign.
Thank you, George. Any other discussion?
Just a question, is this going to have the same condition as the sixty-three Van Dyke? With respect to this approval is for the existing?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Unless somebody objects to that, I I don't see a reason to shouldn't. Okay, Claudia, you want to take the role?
Second, I'm sorry.
Ms. Chen? Yes. All right, yes. Paulson?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Schreiber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's approved. Congratulations on the continuation of your two-family unit. Uh, we are going to take a five-minute break. We will start again at nine eleven. All right, is everybody back? Mr. Kennedy, before we start, are there people you would like to have switched over?
Yes, if we could, um, our architect Dan Fortunato, uh, Jim Kamalik are civil engineer. And there are two folks, Herman and Letka Toll, the applicants.
Can you tell, is that everyone?
I've been, thank you, yep.
Okay, we'll resume. Soon as I find the agenda. Okay, the zoning board is back in order. Going to look at application number Z two zero dash eight seven five or twenty Mount Lucas Road Block forty forty-two oh one lot fifteen RB zone. Karen, are we in order?
And the noticing is in order, the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Derek, would you like to talk us through this one?
Sure, thank you. Uh, Herman and Lekatol are the owners of four twenty Mount Lucas Road. They are seeking a FAR variance pursuant to NJ SA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy-four permit construction of an addition in a new front porch to an existing single-family dwelling. Zoning approval of a second floor addition to an accessory structure that was constructed without zoning approval is also requested. And, uh, bulk C one variances are requested for both structures to make construction and except for the required side rear yard setbacks. Properties located in the, uh, RB zone in the former Princeton township. The existing single-family use is permitted as a right. The subject lot is not complying with regard to the required one hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and eighty square foot lot area. The existing lot area is eight thousand seven hundred and eleven square feet. Not complying with regard to the required two hundred-foot block frontage or width and frontage. Requirements two hundred, existing is fifty point oh three feet and it's not complying with respect to the required two hundred and fifty-foot lot depth. The existing is two hundred and seven feet, um, point eight seven. And that that existing property, the houses are not complying on the right side. Yard setback requirement is thirty-five, the existing is seven point eight feet. Left side, uh, yard setback requirement is also thirty-five and the existing is twelve point one. The front yard setback requirement forty, the existing is twenty-eight point one. The right side yard setback for the garage, uh, department's thirty-five, the existing is twenty-seven point two. It's not complying with regard to the left side, the requirement again thirty-five and the existence eight point one. And the rear yard, uh, setback of the garage, uh, requirements thirty-five feet, the existing is thirty point seven. And the existing house exceeds the proportional floor area ratio of fourteen and a half percent. The existing is fifteen point seven percent. It exceeds the, um, existing impervious coverage requirements to forty-nine and a half percent. The existence fifty-eight and it's not compliant with regard to the height to setback, um, on the house. The requirement's one point five to one, the existing's point seven two to one. And the accessory structure is also not compliant, um, requirements one point five to one and the, uh, existing's point nine four to one. Property received variance relief in May of two thousand seventeen permit the installation of air conditioner condensers and exceptions to require thirty-five-foot right and left yard setbacks. Second variance was approved in two thousand eighteen to permit the construction of a small addition to the house and exception to the required floor area ratio and side yard setback. This addition was never constructed. The applicant is now seeking approval for a second floor addition to the detached accessory structure located behind the house. Um, the addition was built without zoning or building approval. Notice a violation was issued in two thousand nineteen and, um, the applicant's attorney contacted the office and was advised that a, uh, and advised that a variance appeal would be filed. The applicant's also seeking variance relief to permit the construction of a new one hundred and twenty square foot covered front porch, a two hundred and twenty-six square foot addition on the western elevation and a five hundred and eighty-four square foot two-car addition, which will be constructed on the rear elevation. The addition will expand the existing kitchen, add a powder room, provide interior access to the basement and a connection to the proposed two-car garage. There are numerous bulk variances required and the FAR variances required. The max FAR is fourteen point four nine, the existing is fifteen point seven and the proposed will be twenty-six point two percent. There are numerous bulk variances. I'll start with the front porch. The required front yard setback is thirty-five, whereas the beat, whereas the, uh, proposed, uh, setback is eight point eight feet. The required left side setback is thirty-five feet and the proposed is twenty-three point nine. Excuse me, that first right setback is thirty-five and the proposed is eight point eight. The front yard setback requirement is forty feet and the proposed is twenty-one point one. And the second floor addition to the accessory, uh, structure requires a right yard side back, side setback requirement, the requirement is thirty-five feet and the proposed is twenty-one point nine feet. Violates the thirty-five-foot, uh, setback on the left side, the proposed is eight point one. It, uh, encroaches into the rear yard setback, which is thirty-five feet. Uh, the proposed is thirty point seven and it violates the height to setback on the right side, which is, um, one to one point five and it's posed as one to one point three and the height to setback is one to one point five on the left side, it poses one point to zero point nine four. And the main house addition, um, the right setback at the garage requirement is thirty-five feet. The proposed is seven point eight feet. The left side setback requirement again thirty-five feet with the poses fourteen point five feet. Um, the left side setback of the kitchen addition on the house, the requirement is thirty-five, the proposed is twelve point one. The height to setback ratio, um, on the right side is, uh, for the attached garage that will go on the back of the house. Proposes requirements one to one point five and it proposed is one to zero point seven seven and it's not compliant again on the height to setback on the left side of the garage. And it proposes one to one point three three. And the, uh, kitchen addition also puts into the, uh, height to setback requirement of, uh, it's one to zero point six eight. And, uh, there's a, there's a gravel driveway on the joining property to the west, which appears to be used by part of the subject property that has access to the yard. The applicant should discuss if there's an easement or if there's a, uh, this will be in, uh, corrected. The new garage is sixteen feet from the side property line. The applicant should dress out, cars will enter and exit the, uh, the garage. And they've requested consideration of both the C one and C two criteria for the bulk variances. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Uh, any questions for Mr. Bridger? At this point? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, I assume you are representing this, uh, application and please go ahead.
All right, thanks, Chairman. Good evening. As Mr. Bridger just set forth, uh, the Toll family is here for, uh, variances related to their family home at four twenty Mount Lucas Road. Um, as you'll hear, though, this house built in about nineteen thirty, um, is on a point one nine acre lot where three acres is required. And ultimately, the rest of the neighborhood grew up around them, um, but without ceding any property to them. So this quite modest, one-story, currently about eleven hundred square foot home. Uh, I I jokingly told them during the preparations that, you know, if they were to put in a new mailbox that would require a floor area variance, and it's true, uh, floor area and setbacks and everything on on Derek's list. Unfortunately, they're all functions of the size of this lot. You'll see, um, from our planner and architect and and engineer, that this still quite modest home is being slightly updated to meet some of the needs of modern living by adding a new front porch. The prior front porch had been closed in to get a little bit of extra interior space um, and a covered, uh, and then an actual functioning garage. But even more important in the garage is to enclose the steps to the basement. The current configuration for this house requires, um, to leave the house, go outside with laundry and then go back into the basement through the Bilco doors, uh, to get down into the basement, uh, to do to the laundry. So one of the big, the big features of this, um, plan that architect Dan Fortunato has put together is actually to enclose those steps so you can get in the basement with your laundry without going outside in the rain. There's two components here that we're going to be talking about. First is a an accessory building that they rebuilt. I'll say mistakenly on the on the original footprint, um, uh, with their contractor, not realizing that by creating a small loft area, a a portion of that, which is above seven feet, counted as new floor area. So there is a little tiny strip that kind of triggered this. Um, and then after talking with, uh, with with Derek and the town staff in bringing the application, the the thought became, well, um, yes, we have to come here to to fix that, but this may be something that they'll never want to have to do again. So maybe pause, think about, are there any things about this house that there need to be fixed so that we could bring one application, one to correct that, um, I guess that mistake with the, uh, with the building that's being kind of used as a hobby room? Uh, and then the the modest additions to the modest house that all require variances, that laundry list of variances, that Derek mentioned. We'll have our planner, Jim Kyle. Um, we'll have our civil engineer, Jim Kamalik, um, and our architect, Dan Fortunato, take us through this. We also have, uh, uh, the the holes, the, uh, family, uh, two of the members here tonight, the applicants. Perhaps we can have, um, them all sworn in together if that's all right.
All right, so we have Mr. and Mrs. Toll. We have Jim Kyle, we have Dan Fortunato and Jim. If you would all raise your right hand, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, before I bring our slides to have our, our. Thank you. Um, so with that, before I bring our slides to have our our civil engineer start taking us through this, just wanted to introduce the Tolls um and have them kind of talk about uh uh their property and their needs a little bit and their connection uh to Princeton, uh, just for a moment as an introduction.
Uh, my name's Herman Toll. Uh, I've I've been a resident, my wife and I have been residents of Princeton for the past um thirty six years. I've um, I came here originally as an administrator at Princeton University and ended up on the faculty. I taught at Rutgers. In the last ten years before I retired, I taught at Lafayette College. I've been involved in a lot of things in town. I was a president of the PTO at Community Park where my our kids went to school. We raised our two boys in Princeton. Um, one still lives in Princeton, he's a thirty year old and he's in practice with my wife as a dentist and I'll um, I'll I'll leave that up to.
Are you ready?
There we go.
Thanks. Um, well, Herman pretty much covered everything. We've lived in Princeton for, I think, since eighty seven. Um, I've had my practice in town, serving the needs of the Princeton community's dental stuff. And my son is in practice with me now and um that's really all there is to say.
Thanks. And just before we start, uh, well, I'll I'll jump in actually um with the with a question about that accessory building a little bit later. So thank you so much for the introduction. Uh, as we have with our other applications, if there are, I'm going to share my screen and ask that we mark our one exhibit um as an exhibit here with the the numbered slides. And I'm going, we're going to start with our our civil site engineer, um, Jim Kamalik. I know he's testified many times, but uh um, uh, Mr. Chair, i- if it's acceptable to have him uh accepted as an expert engineer, uh, or I could have him go through his uh credentials.
I think I remember you, Mr. Uh, so go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, Jim, first, we're going to kind of orient the the board to what we're talking about. This is a a different part of Mount Lucas, a little bit further down, uh, that blue arrow kind of points to what we're talking about here.
Yeah, you can see the subject lot, it's located in the RB zone and it's that very small. As you mentioned, approximately point two acre lot that's surrounded by two larger lots on each side.
So here in the next slide, this is, I think, the tax map, but so that's lot fifteen that we're talking about.
That's correct. So this is the subject lot, lot fifteen, and you can see lot sixteen and lot fourteen on each side. You know, just just to give the board the understanding of um the modest home on the property as well as the limited uh lot area, it's our understanding that this was part of perhaps a a prior uh lot configuration with lots fourteen, fifteen and sixteen um that uh with lot lines adjusted in the past in order to provide building lots on uh lots fourteen and sixteen, which are newer, single-family residential dwellings. Um, and lot fifteen is basically the older structure that was to remain. Um, and you can see the the limits in terms of the lot area and the encumbrances of the fifty foot wide uh lot width here.
Now, Jim, is it the case that with the three acre zoning in this particular, in the RB zone, that it would not be possible to even purchase or or acquire other land from the surrounding lot without making those themselves non-conforming?
Yes, yeah, the tax map shows uh approximately one acre for fourteen and lot sixteen is just slightly over, barely over three acres itself.
Next, we've got a overview to show the neighborhood context. Any anything you want to add to this, Jim?
No, just just the overall, you know, wooded nature of the surrounding area, as you can see, and again, uh, two two larger, single-family homes on those lots that we just spoke about, lots fourteen and sixteen on each side. Within a wooded area through rear as well of the subject property.
So next, we're we're kind of moving to the existing conditions and the site plan here. You want to uh, so I I think outlined in orange on the to the right is the existing home and to the left is that existing shed uh or or uh craft room accessory building, is that right?
That's correct. So um in the upper left-hand corner, you can see uh the accessory building, which is highlighted uh with that blue arrow as the orange rectangle in the lower left-hand corner of your screen. Um, and you could see if you look at least at your plans more closely, remnants of the existing foundation. From that, there's new siding on it in terms of the structure. Um, and we can clarify on some future slides the extent by which um the modification is made uh to this outbuilding here. It was previously just a simple gable building. And basically, the right-hand um slope of the gable was expanded for that that upper right-hand uh loft area. So that's really the extent here, the the left um, the left roof line was maintained. And also, the footprint of the structure was maintained and not expanded.
So I think you hear this slide shows uh.
Yeah, this is a representation here of of a pictorial representation of what that gable uh, just to give you an idea, looked like with the the structure in terms of its geometry being maintained in the area that was added as a loft space that that upper um, you know, asymmetrical uh area up and to the right.
And uh, these are the floor plans as built, you know, this is some that already exists and we're seeking uh approval for, but this uh the top left is the the footprint of the first floor of that shed as it as it existed prior to being rebuilt. And this right is the loft section and is is it this gray area represents the the small area of new floor area that that actually counts and why we're we're really talking about it from a variance perspective?
Yeah, that's correct. That's the area that's just slightly over the seven foot height threshold, which would count for floor area uh pursuant to the code, and then the rest of the um floor area on that second floor transitions from approximately three feet up to seven feet, you know, pursuant to that. Uh, the the sloped roof that exists there. So it's just that small area that's triggering additional FAR within this structure.
Next, um, and we're going to kind of start framing out what what the problems we're looking to solve with the some of the additions to the home here. Uh, you're understanding, you know, that that currently, uh, Jim, that the the site layout is a pedestrian layout, but to to get into the the basement where the laundry is, um, it there, there's no way to do that without leaving the house?
Yeah, that's that's correct. They they need to exit the structure and then enter the Bilco doors um that are adjacent to the existing driveway.
And and currently, there's not a traditional front porch there. It previously had been uh an enclosed porch that was kind of uh subsumed into the the home at some earlier point.
That's correct. Yeah, I think there was um a a bathroom relocation or addition within that area in order to suit the occupancy of the first floor and and the architect may speak to that uh in the future. But then this this project does uh propose basically a approximately seven foot wide. Yes, seven foot wide uh front porch on the front of uh the structure as shown on the proposed plan.
Yeah, and I guess here's an overlay that shows the the new uh proposed building, the front porch in the front in front of the, you know, of the home and then the garage to the rear.
Yes, and the garage to the rear is in the location of existing at-grade asphalt parking that's behind the residential dwelling, so where vehicles currently park and, you know, are exposed entirely to the weather. Uh, you know, it's existing impervious surface. This garage uh structure would enclose that parking area and provide for two parking stalls in that existing parking area.
All right. Uh, I'm next going to move to a a slide that's very similar, but this is the actual site plan that you drew uh overlaid with those new with those new parts of the structure highlighted. Derek went through a a laundry list and I I mean that slightly in in jest because we're, one of the problems trying to solve is access to laundry here, but of those variances, uh, and from the bulk perspective, man, anything you want to say about the the relationship of the new structures to the existing non-conformities? I mean, I I know where a lot of a lot of effort was taken to respect the existing uh setback, for example, on uh on the right side of the home for uh but perhaps you can, you take the board through to the tour, unfortunately, of of the the types of problems you have with such a woefully undersized lot.
Yeah, I I guess the the first take-home message is referring back to that tax map. You know, we're dealing with zoning requirements for um a three acre lot in this zone, so when it's applied to such um, you know, an undersized lot, in this particular case, what's what's acute is the um, the setbacks, you know, that that ultimately need to be respected per the zoning ordinance, but you know, don't really fit in this case because the the building envelope is extremely small, but um, what the applicant does have here is trying to maintain the existing setback lines from the existing dwelling in orange as extrapolated both to the porch in the front as well as to the uh garage addition in the rear in terms of not further encroaching within those setbacks, but just extending them to the rear. Um, and again, as I mentioned, the accessory building uh at the rear where the loft was added on that one side, that the limits of that structure maintains the existing condition, you know, in terms of its its outer uh footprint uh relative to the foundation that you saw in one of the first few slides.
Thanks, Jim. Um, uh, next, uh, if I could, uh, ask Dan Fortunato to unmute himself. I know you've testified many times uh on applications I've had um uh before this and other Princeton boards, but uh, if you want to just quickly start into your 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 credentials and and we can have you uh accepted, I I hope as a as an expert here this evening.
Uh, yes, I am Dan Fortunato, practicing architect for thirty seven years. Um, I've been living in Princeton area since nineteen eighty nine. I am licensed currently in three states, including New Jersey. And um, so the uh, the tolls hired me to come on board to rectify basically the same outline that uh was was brought up, that is, the the inconvenience of essentially trying to live in this house, it's such a very narrow house. So uh initially, uh, Jim mentioned about a front porch addition that was done previously, not part of this application, but it was a uh extension that was done for a bathroom and to add a bathroom and really make a a front vestibule uh more more usable. So that's the porch, which is uncovered and is part of this application. Essentially is where the arrow is now, and that's really just going to be a masonry porch, just to get up the steps into the house. The old porch was uh, or steps, as you say, were just masonry steps, just totally unusable and and just deteriorated. So that was all previously done uh at an earlier project. Uh, again, not part of this application. Uh, the main part of this project, though, of course, is the back where we have the two-car garage addition and trying to create access to the basement. Uh, the Bilco doors are still shown, but that's not really the intent is not to have that as our main entrance anymore. But essentially, going around the kitchen, now there's a sliver of a front entryway there that is part of the access, not to destroy the kitchen that was just redone. So we actually added on a piece in about a four-foot hallway, if you will, that gets them through the kitchen and then around towards the garage. And that would allow them to have another lavatory as well as the basement stairs. And that would be where uh, it was mentioned earlier about trying to do laundry, getting laundry down, a little more convenience to to modify that space. The uh garage, uh, again, for obvious reasons that the the owners would like to have a covered protected area for their vehicles, and it is over already impervious coverage that Jim mentioned. And the uh idea is to get a two-car garage, which is going to be approximately twenty-four deep feet deep, uh, it's pretty much the same width of the house as it is now. We essentially just took the very same roof line and just continued it towards the rear. So we're not really going any wider, of course, we're going deeper, but not wider on the house as it stands right now. And uh, trying to keep it that vernacular, as you can see there, we just tried to take the same hip roof design and same character of the house, it just extended it towards the rear. Uh, as Derek mentioned, unfortunately, due to the close proximity of the house, it is violating side yard setbacks uh and a whole uh list of uh variances that uh he mentioned earlier. But just trying to work with what we got on the site, and this is the uh pretty much the best we could do without trying to impede any more than we have to, just just trying to keep this structure trying to fit within the same character of the house, same width of the house, just taking it deeper towards the rear yard.
Thanks, Dan. Um, uh, maybe it's too early for this, but uh, have they made any just choices about uh materials yet? Will they be matching the current um siding or or is that still uh still to be built of?
Yeah, I mean, but but due to budget reasons, probably the owner will go with vinyl siding that will, if it doesn't match, at least be replaced with something newer. Of course, the asphalt shingles, I can't testify right now, the age, the current asphalt shingles, they do have to replace throughout the whole house. But again, yeah, it's just a little premature. We don't really get into color schemes or anything like that at this time.
And the uh, the the front porch itself will be a um uh a standard with a with a railing and a and a proper step to to replace the crumbling concrete one that's there now.
Yeah, it's a masonry porch. It'll be all masonry and yes, it will have guardrails and handrails to comply with code.
Excellent, thank you. Um, and not, uh, maybe some questions, but I'll I'll go back to uh to 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 Jim here as we get back to the variances. Uh, the next photos, I just are just meant to to show the the wooded nature of the area and the the screening from the the street. And then and then, Jim, um, if we could, before we get to our planning testimony, if you could just walk us through the the variances that we do need. Um, and then uh, Jim Kyle uh can base his testimony on that lesson.
It may be prudent. Um, Derek actually, in his letter, went through all the proposed bulk variances, and I think there may have been some um clarifications from his standpoint, so I might refer to that just from a housekeeping standpoint. Um, again, the front porch, a front setback of forty feet, which was required, proposed at twenty one point one feet. Um, a left and right side yard setback for that front porch where thirty five is required, proposed at eight point eight and twenty three point nine. Um, for the main house and the garage addition, the required right right side yard setback for the garage, thirty five feet required, proposed seven point eight. The left side, thirty five required, fourteen point five um required left side setback for the kitchen addition, just clarifying that thirty five required, proposed at twelve point one. And then some height to setback ratio on the garage, where one to one point five is required on the right side. We have one to zero point seven seven and on the left side of that garage, one to one point three three. And then a height to setback on the kitchen addition right side of one to zero point six eight. And then in terms of the accessory structure, the required right side yard setback, thirty five required. Uh, twenty one point nine feet is provided. Uh, the required left side yard setback, thirty five feet required, eight point one. Again, if you remember that that there was no change to that uh at all, that's still existing. Uh, required rear yard setback, thirty point seven, again, still existing, no change. Height to setback on the right side for that accessory building, one to one point three three. And on the left side, one to zero point nine four, where one to one point five is required. So I think from a housekeeping standpoint, those are the bulk requirements, again, driven by the fact that it's a fifty foot wide lot. And we have a house, we have the accessory structure as well.
Now, Jim, just to, before we hand it off to to Jim Kyle, just so I have it right. The side yard setback is thirty five feet. Uh, so to 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 meet both of those, you'd need seventy feet before you could have any building envelope. And our lot is fifty feet wide, is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
And I should mention, um, I guess, two things here from a, the FAR, as previously mentioned, uh, where seven and a half percent is the max, fifteen point seven percent is the existing, twenty six point two is what is proposed. from the FAR, as previously mentioned, where seven and a half percent is the max fifteen point seven percent is the existing twenty six point two is what is proposed. And on the impervious coverage, fifty eight percent is existing and fifty eight is proposed. There's no change to that, just noting that forty nine point five is the standard based on the lot size per the ordinance. And then we had a parking setback of nine point seven feet where forty feet is required from the side yard. Again, it's a fifty foot wide lot, but that's the distance to the outside of the garage, as I recollect.
Thanks, Jim. And and with that, I'd like to turn it over to our planner, Jim Kyle, one last time this evening to to summarize and go through the C and in this case, D requirements for the floor area increase that we're talking about here tonight.
Sure. So good evening again, everyone. I was retained by the applicant to review the planning issues associated with this application, met with counsel. We discussed the the nature of the application and what was proposed. Also reviewed Mr. Kamalik's site plan, the zoning ordinance and master plan, as well as Mr. Bridger's memo and conducted investigation of the subject property and surroundings. I think we've pretty well covered the subject property itself. And as we've discussed, there's a number of existing nonconforming conditions here. You know, largely just due to the fact that, you know, this is a point two acre lot in a three acre zone. It just presents a lot of practical difficulties in, you know, doing anything reasonable. So let's address first the D four variance, the FAR variance. As the board has heard many times, this is a little bit different standard than a typical D one. We're judging this based on the standards outlined by the court in Coventry Square v. Westwood. So we're just trying to determine, does the property remain suitable for the for the use despite an increase in floor area on the positive? On the negative criteria, we're looking at the specific impact of the increase, excuse me, in floor area on surrounding properties. And then on the second prong, just reconciling the increase sought versus the governing body's intent of limiting that floor area in the first place. So on the D four variance, again, we're seeking approval for twenty six point two percent where fourteen and a half is the maximum that's allowed. So on the positive criteria, I think the grant of the variance here does promote promote purposes of zoning. Purpose A to promote the general welfare. So as we've talked about, the increase in floor area here really just provides a reasonably sized addition to the house to make it more functional. And we talked about the laundry issue and having to go outside as well as to provide garage space for vehicles and other storage of of materials on the site. There's really nothing extravagant in the floor plan. Again, the bedrooms are modest, the dwelling itself is modest, the living space is modest. And much of the increase in the floor that we're seeking here this evening is related to the detached garage and the expansion of the living area is minor. I think also purpose I is promoted here as well. The garage addition will provide indoor parking for cars and storage of other items that'll improve the appearance of the lot. We're also replacing parking area with garage structure. So it's it's a good replacement there. We're not increasing impervious coverage on the site to achieve this. And I think overall, the addition will provide a dwelling that's more commensurate with those in the neighborhood and will be an improvement to the to the site and to surrounding properties as well. In terms of the negative criteria, any potential impact from that increase on surrounding properties? So as we saw in the exhibits, Mr. Kennedy had put up, there's substantial screening that we have particularly to the lot to the south. So a lot of the area on the north side, you know, will be dwelling, but there's no activity on that side. So most of the activity occurs on the south side. We have significant screening to that dwelling to the south. The lot that's to the north, they have a driveway on the south side of the dwelling, so that that dwelling is pushed a little farther to the north. So there's probably less of a chance of an impact from from that increase in floor area. And the structure will remain one story and and still be modest in appearance. So there shouldn't be any substantial visual impact associated with the increase that we're seeking. It'll, you know, won't present a large mass, you know, very close to the property line as a result of the increase. So I think overall, there won't be any substantial impact to the adjacent properties from this. As far as the intent and purpose of the zone plan and reconciling it, the obvious intent here of the flurry control is to control mass and coverage of the lot, but also to regulate the appearance of structures in relation to available land. So there's specific discussion in in the municipality's planning documents about, you know, this this teardown problem that we've had for quite some time and the replacement of smaller structures with larger ones. And that was felt to be detrimental potentially to neighborhood character. This is a somewhat unique situation, I think, given the degree of nonconformity that this lot has compared to the zone. Again, it's a three acre minimum zone and we have about two tenths of an acre eighty seven hundred and eleven square feet, and that's really what is driving, you know, this comparison. So on a percentage basis, it looks like a large increase, but on a square footage basis, it's not all that much. It's just the proportion of the lot area that's really driving this. So I think the result of the granted variance here will, again, be a dwelling that that will remain modest by comparison to those on surrounding lots. So in my mind, you know, when we look at the intent and the discussion about FAR controls over the past, the increase sought here will not relate and result in the condition that those FAR standards sought to avoid. So I think that's how we can reconcile it in this case with that limit. In terms of the bulk variances, as we've discussed, there are a number of them. This qualifies in my mind as a C one hardship really on all of these variances, just related to the size of the lot for the requirements in the zone. So the discussion that we had a few minutes ago about the fact that, you know, if you apply two side yard setbacks to thirty five feet, you couldn't even do that on this lot because it's only fifty feet wide. We also have no hope to acquire land from adjacent properties without making them nonconforming. So we have a three acre lot to our south, we have a one acre lot to our north in a three acre zone. So there's really no ability to acquire additional property that wouldn't make those lots either further nonconforming or make them nonconforming. So I think the undersized nature of the lot, you know, any construction on this lot is going to require substantial relief just based on the narrow width and and the lot area itself. As far as any impact to surrounding properties from the variances, as Mr. Kamalik pointed out, the additions are respecting the existing side yard setback to the north where that garage addition and the kitchen addition, or rather, the stairway addition will occur. So we're holding that that line of seven point eight feet along that north side. This continues to provide separation from the dwellings to the north, rather, the dwelling to the north. And while the garage and the porch addition bring the building closer to the southern property line, the driveways between, and there's a substantial buffer on that existing property to the south. Also noting that this is a single story addition, so reducing the setbacks here in my mind is a little bit less of an issue because there's less building mass. You know, for example, not having anything on the second floor tends to mitigate some of those impacts of light air and open space. You know, given that close proximity to the property line. As far as the intent and purpose of the standards that we're seeking relief from, none of these are really specifically addressed in the master plan. So, you know, we know the intent of the height to setback and the setbacks themselves. So in my mind, you know, those standards are intended to provide adequate separation between dwellings and to not negatively impact light air and open space. So I think when you kind of take this all together with the nature of the lot and the conditions that we have, the buffering that we have and the separation that exists, I I think overall, these will not have a substantial impact on the intent and purpose of those setback standards. You know, again, particularly given the nature of this specific lot, and that's really what we're looking at in the case of the C one variance, you know, what are the conditions of the lot that are creating the hardship? And I think it's fairly evident as we've gone through the case this evening, you know, what the real issue is. Mr. Chairman, that's all I had in the way of direct. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, James. Ryan, do you have a summary statement you'd like to make before we go to the public?
Sure. Again, this is a it was a long process for this family to get here. It was initially triggered by that that back rebuilding that that back shed that prior owner had converted to, you know, kind of a craft room or or studio. But, you know, it was an opportunity to look at what things could be done to make this very modest home a little bit more useful. I think you heard the additions are quite modest, extremely functional in nature. And while from a list of variance perspective, do require relief from the board, they are all well under and in keeping with the scale of other homes in the neighborhood with a seven point five percent floor area on a three acre lot. This modest modest home really is is nothing in in comparison. You could add another ten thousand square feet and frankly would still perhaps feel undersized for what could be built in the zone. The other bulk variances, a lot of care was was taken to, you know, in almost every case, respect the existing lines that that the existing home follows, so as not to go closer to either side. And the one spot where that was not possible with the garage addition, and it's just a minor increase, that is the largest setback that the home has. And it is buffered both by the driveway, the existing driveway and a a landscaped area on the other side of the the lot line and quite a distance from that home. This is small house living and small house problems and small lot problems. Unfortunately, again, as we started, there's nothing that could ever be done to this home that's not going to require variance. So the thought after speaking with staff was to, not that these are a big pile of changes, but to to step back and look at what will make this house livable and useful for for the family for the time period. And the addition of a front porch and the addition of the of the garage over existing impervious coverage, no new coverage is being created from this application seemed like the best combination of of making this tiny house, you know, modestly more usable for the family, solve some of their tiny house problems and hopefully not have to come back to the zoning board anytime soon. So again, thank you so much. We're happy to answer any questions or or.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy or for applicants? Sharon, did you want to say something?
I did. Mr. Kennedy, before you close your presentation, are any of your witnesses going to address the staff notes that are in Derek's memo? He's asking, is there an easement or a cross access easement which will which allows your clients to cross over an adjacent property? That's on page four.
So that is the existing condition. It is not by formal easement, it is by informal agreement and and in all likelihood, a claim of adverse possession if the informal agreement doesn't have doesn't continue. There is a the the current state is that the the tolls actually maintain that area, the buffer area, not just the driver, but the the kind of landscaped area that is to the south of that, the agreement is for them to maintain that and that driveway that slightly encroaches the exchanges that 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 would continue. But it's this house was built in nineteen thirty. And in all likelihood, if that had to be solidified or or dealt with, it would be, we'd hope in a neighborly way, but ultimately that's how it's worked out.
Something else, Karen?
No, no, Derek, from the zoning perspective, is that a concern? The absence of any formal agreement or you have other situations like that with other properties?
Having recently, it just looked tight getting in and out of the new garage.
We we did look at that. There is some, you know, the not that the garage is, nothing about this project or size is oversized. So what if I say oversized, that that is only in the context of the minimum necessary. However, there is room and we we did talk about this if, you know, if preferable to some kind of condition that we, you know, reinvent the the easement situation. If it is determined, perhaps administratively at some that that's not the enough size, we we could, there there is enough room in that garage to to step it back a foot or two. And 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 have a little bit more room to to maneuver there.
But that would mean that entering and exiting, you'd still have to go on the neighboring property or you're saying perhaps not?
No, with that change, you know, you you might still end up doing that because it's easier and that's the convention and, you know, it's there, but you wouldn't. I'll let Jim speak to that, but you know, with with the amount of space that's there, you you could you could back out and 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 make the turning movement.
Anything else? Okay, we'll close this portion. Or is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? Please raise your hand.
There are no hands.
Yep, seeing none, I will close the public comment. I don't think, Mr. Kennedy, you need to make another closing comment, but.
I appreciate that. Now, just thank you again for your time tonight. This is the oldest house in the neighborhood, but the one that got left behind. You know, in all the children's books of the tiny house with the city built around it, that that's this lot and that's this home. And and appreciative of of the consideration and allowing them to make some modest changes. The the changes are disproportionate to the number of variants that are needed, end up being quite reasonable and and we hope you find appropriate for the site, notwithstanding its absolutely minuscule size compared to what the zone requires.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any final questions for the applicants? We close this portion and go into executive session. Comments? Questions? Motion seconds?
Donna?
Yeah. Are we comfortable granting a variance that involves the use of the adjoining property owner's lot? With with a fire pit that's partially on the adjoining property with use of the gravel drive that's on the adjoining property? Is this something we should be doing?
Well, ordinarily, an applicant would either need all their improvements on their property or I think the board would normally say then then we are not going to improve, we're not going to approve improvements which require you to cross over to another person's property in the absence of any easement. So we sort of have two, we have the garage, which is new. And we've Mr. Kennedy indicated that that garage will be, we say, put back one foot further and that that would alleviate the need to exit and enter on the neighboring property. Did I summarize that correctly?
That's that's correct.
So that's that's that that could alleviate one concern that a new garage is being built, but there's no way to enter and exit without going on someone else's property.
And Karen, just to be clear, I'm being reminded it's two feet, so we would if we would reduce the size of garage by two feet and that would allow that getting in and out more easily.
I have a question to Mr. Bridger, which is.
George, can you turn up your sound a little? We can't hear you.
All right.
George, just one, let me just, I just want to clarify with Mr. Kennedy. Reduce the size of the garage or reduce its setback?
So we we believe there's enough room without increasing the setback on the other side, not just shifting the whole thing, but actually reducing the left to right, front to back depth by two feet. There'd still be adequate room in the garage for the car to get around and then with it being two feet further from that southern property line, enough room to more comfortably back in now.
And then I don't know if the board would wants to just understand better this gravel drive on the joining property to the west, which is used to access the rear yard. And by that you mean, or Derek, they're using it to access the rear yard with a car, I assume. That's what what you're saying. And by that you mean, or Derek, they're using it to access the rear yard with a car, I assume. That's what, what you're saying.
I, I mean, I'm just looking at the survey. I don't know if they've used it, that it's, you know, you go to the site, you go, you look at the survey, there's, there's gravel there. I'm just concerned that if the owner changes on the other property, that it becomes an issue. And the two feet would get us to 18 if they reduce the width of the garage. I don't know if the board would consider allowing them to slide the whole garage back another two feet, which would get us to 20 into the, the other side yard setback, which would provide 20 feet, which is still tight, but it's better than 16. I don't know if that has any problematic.
Okay with, with, with either of solutions. We, you know, we, we analyze it with the sensitivity that perhaps you may not, you know, want to move further in that other direction. But certainly that would work as well for, for us. And, and I imagine if we brought Jim Kyle back on to testify with, without any significant impact to, to a neighboring property.
Okay, George, go ahead.
My question to Mr. Bridger is what are the requirements for emergency equipment access? And does this property meet them in its current configuration?
I mean, it has a 12-foot driveway, which would accommodate most emergency vehicles. I mean, and the lot is small. So typically the truck, if, even if it can pull into the driveway, just by the front porch, they could fight the fire from that location.
Thanks.
Other comments?
You know, I'm, I'm still uncomfortable granting a variance where there's encroachments on the adjoining property. When, when you talk about the, the gravel drive, is that being used to access that accessory structure in the back? That we're being asked to approve after the fact? Is, is the fire pit something that we should be concerned about? I, I'm just, should we be comfortable granting an easement where there's already, you know, non-conformities kind of going on in the, in the property that we're sort of then putting our perimeter on?
Eric, a question for you. If this garage is reduced in size or width and moved, does that eliminate the need for this use of this gravel drive? I'm not clear what the gravel drive is used for. I guess that's,
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'm not either.
Perhaps it would be helpful to, to bring our engineer back on. I can put that on there because I think there's two, two elements here. One is, I think, a historic artifact likely relating to a prior variance that was granted. If you look back at the 2017 variance, at one point, this back building had been used as a garage apparently. And two owners ago converted it, at least according to the, the zoning approval, the zoning board approval from a garage to the craft room that it is now. Likely some of this gravel was associated with getting a car back there. But Jim Kamalak, about the difference between these two kinds of areas that we're talking about. And then the part that actually was kind of maybe used for, for driveway versus the larger area.
Yeah, from the, from the applicant's standpoint, the gravel area that's between the property line and the accessory dwelling, that's not used for access by vehicles in that area. It's not used. What's used is the paved asphalt driveway, which is in this darker gray color, as you see on this particular slide. So that's what we're concerned about. That's the area that's used. And that's what would be continued to be used in that vicinity to, to access the garage. And that fire pit, although it was there when they purchased the property, they can remove that so that that no longer encroaches. And it's, it's a non-issue.
And, and Jim, two other questions for you. One, I understand there's like kind of a buffer of bamboo to the south of this gravel area. Is your understanding that, that the other owner installed that there to kind of stop the, the, the migration of bamboo? And, and then second, with the move, you know, the, the two-foot alteration of the garage that we've been talking about, does that then sufficient that this little tiny piece that we were talking about of driveway that crosses the line, that that wouldn't be, you wouldn't, if that were not there, you'd still be able to make the turning movement?
You'd, you would still be able to, to get out of the garage, you know? Again, it's a tight area and that would have to be, you know, negotiated by giving that extra two feet. If, if it were shifted, you know, two feet closer to the property line to maintain that width, that would certainly improve the situation and not have a worry for that encroachment.
All right. So, so the testimony, your testimony, Mr. Chimalak, is that in fact with the relocation or the reduction in size of the garage, it will not be necessary for the applicant to drive on the neighboring property to get in and out of the garage, correct?
Correct.
All right. And that the gravel area that is near the accessory building that is not being used. Now, I'm not entirely clear if that's the gravel drive or what that is, but you're saying it's not needed.
Well, that, that dotted, the dotted area that you're referring to on the plan.
Yeah.
That was placed by the prior owner. As, as I understand it, it wasn't placed by this applicant. So, you know.
By prior owner though, prior owner of the neighboring property. So that, that's, that was the part of the bamboo suppression plan that they put together and not for access. And maybe if I went back to a, one of the other, you, you could, you can kind of see here, that side of the, of the garage just doesn't, you know, it, it's, it's, this is the driveway part that's, that's, you know, more, more permanently improved. The other one is very different and not used for access, if that helps from a material perspective.
It does. Thank you. Other comments? Questions?
Yeah. So I'm looking at sheet one of the variance plan, which shows as like an underlayment previous parking spaces and how that was laid out with the, the paved driveway with that, the, the radius turn that encroaches into the neighboring property. And it, it really will be tight still, even with adjustments made. So I would think it, it would be helpful. I, I don't know if this can be a condition, if, if they actually showed those turning radiuses and, and document that, that that can be done. Because just looking at why it was laid out this way in the first place, it, it seems like it just barely worked the, the way that it was with much more generous, you know, turning radiuses. So I, I think that that first page of that variance plan kind of makes that clear.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Comments?
I guess I, I do agree with those comments. I'm glad Donna raised it. I, I think the, the board is going to approve, if they're going to approve something, it should be workable, respecting the lot line. So I guess with making the garage a bit smaller, and I guess my question in my mind is, should there be a condition that it's the turning radius to the satisfaction of the municipal engineer? I don't know if that's something others might be looking for some occurrence on. You know, we don't want to approve something that's not workable and seem to be endorsing, you know, going into the other property. So I think that was a good point.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the question, you know, it comes down to so many questions, like what kind of car are you driving? You know, or if it's a big SUV, you'd have a real problem. If it's a Prius, you might not. So but I do think, I don't, I, I do agree with Donna. There's no way we can approve land that approaches on somebody else's property. So I'm not sure, Mr. Kennedy, what you'd like to.
Well, I'll just, I'll add one that, that, that's the current conditions that do. There's no, there's no part of the improvements planned or the variance that are being requested that encroach under the property. It just happens to be that's where the driveway is. The testimony is that it's, it is by agreement. I think it's a, a good point though, that, and then the testimony was that with the two-foot reduction in the garage size, that there would be sufficient room to accommodate for, you know, the, you know, I'll say pretending, but you know, that, that the, if that extra space across the lot line were not to exist, that there would be sufficient space then to turn. I, I think it is a good idea, perhaps for us to work with the, perhaps some kind of condition that we work with the, the engineer and make works and, and to that end, and to avoid perhaps coming back here for another variance. There was discussion earlier about shifting the garage. And perhaps if, if it, if it satisfies the board that we could work with the engineer to confirm that, you know, if the revision of two to four feet between making the garage smaller and shifting it two feet, that was discussed earlier, between the two, that four feet would be available in working with the engineer to, to satisfy that that he agrees with our engineer's testimony that, that there's enough room to turn there.
Karen, can we state that? Can you state that?
Well, I, I, I think, Mr. Kennedy, what I think what you're really asking is that will the board grant an additional variance tonight, correct? Not just for.
Correct. That, that, that the garage, a two-foot variance, as was suggested earlier, on the, on the garage should be closer to that far property line.
All right. So the idea is the width would be reduced by two feet?
So the width could be reduced by two feet and then it could be shifted, right? Up to two feet. Yeah.
And the shift will, the shift will actually make less conforming to the setback on the other side. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
I just want to caution that if the engineer doesn't agree with it, then you know, you don't get a garage. I mean, maybe it's made sense to come up with some scenarios and run them by the engineer. I don't want to see it go away if you're, and not have an approval if it, if the engineer, you know, he couldn't be here tonight. He's at another meeting. If it doesn't work, you know, if he doesn't agree that it works.
You mean just carry it, Derek, so that?
I know, I know Ryan's not, or the tolls are probably not interested in that. But I, it might make sense in this case to have the engineer review with Jim Kamalak some different scenarios. Maybe show how an actual car could get in and out of the garage and stay on the subject lot. With the revised, revised two foot further shifting it towards the other property line and either a two or three foot reduction in the width of the garage. But I don't know if that affects your access to the basement that's down there or that was another reason for the garage addition.
Well, I mean, it would.
I think that's a good idea, Derek. It's, it's rare that I, that I don't say something that you said is a good idea. But I, I do, it's a valid point that was raised. And I think that's something we could, I'm sure, work out or confirm, you know, in very short order. And then, you know, we've, we've, all, all of the testimony frankly is, is on, on the record already. And, and just return back on that one narrow piece of, of issue. I, I'll likely be here anyway.
Next week. I mean, next meeting is next week.
Yeah. So I, I, that, I think, again, Derek, I think that's a good idea. If we could carry it to, to next week, we just probably need a day or so and to, and to just to track Jim down. And for all I know, for all we know, that maybe it does work in that, you know, limited area. And then if we, if we need a slightly different variance, we could, we could, we could do that.
Go ahead, Karen.
No, I was going to say is, since it's, if it is going to be carried, are there any other board concerns or comments since the applicant will come back in a week that, that, you know, they can?
That's, that's what I was going to ask. Because if we're, inclination is not to approve this for other reasons, then, you know, we ought to hear that now and not not go to the next one. So.
Does shifting the garage, I'm not sure, does that increase the impervious coverage or?
It, it would slightly if we didn't compensate otherwise. I, I believe there's other areas, including some of those gravel areas that we talked about, you know, with the fire pit that's not in the right spot that perhaps could be reconfigured to, to accommodate.
Other, other concerns? I mean, I, I kind of like the idea of going and getting the turning radius approved. My feeling about the other variants is that this property violates almost every every rule we have anyhow. And adding a couple of feet one way or the other is not going to materially change any of that. And so I'm kind of inclined to, to approve it. I, I have to say though, that I'm disturbed about the fact that you built on to the addition of the back shed without getting permission about that. It bugs me that people do that in town. And I just state that to you that I, you know, I, I wish you had gone through the rules, regulations at the time. But that being said, that's sort of how I feel about it. Others? Anybody? I mean, if you, if, if you all feel strongly about not approving this, you need to say it now. Am I thinking?
I feel strongly about not approving it because of, of the, you know, the, the neighboring property situation.
Yeah.
I feel very uneasy about that.
But if we can, if we can, if they can improve that, then you're okay with it?
I mean, if they can take the fire pit out and, and show us that they're not going to use this other property or, or get whatever cross easements they need or just fix it somehow. So it, it, it looks a lot more legal.
All right. No, I think we all agree with, we, I think we all kind of agree with that principle.
I, I, it seems like in this case, the idea of buying additional property didn't come into play. That might have, that might help.
Yeah.
Would make the other property unconformate.
Oh, really? Oh, that's right. There's so much bigger than this one, but they're still not big enough.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I think if, if there's a, a diagram that shows that it truly works, yeah, I'm okay with.
Okay.
If, if, if everything truly fits on their property.
Good. Thank you. Others? George? Good. Thank you. Others? George? Jim?
I agree. I, I just would, Bernice says, well, I think if, if, if they can, if the engineer says they can actually get a just about any car be able to turn around and get out of that garage, then I think the rest, I, I would, I would let go, but having it, I couldn't see through to passing it if it looks like it's for the fourth zeal, future that we're backing into the other person's property in order to leave their garage. That's, that's a, that's kind of a non-starter.
None of that precludes them from pulling on the other neighbor's lot if the neighbor doesn't want it, but but we need to see proof that it, if the neighbor decides that that's not acceptable, then we have to know.
Right. We can't codify that, that they're able to do that if the neighbor doesn't want it.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Kennedy?
It is. We, we, we believe we can show that. We'll, we'll, we'll make those combination of adjustments and and, and then show, you know, if we'll carry it to, to next week, we should be able to show that then.
So for, for the benefit, even though it doesn't look as if there's anybody in the audience tonight for this application, it'll be carried to March 30th and the applicant will not be required to re-notice. So we're announcing tonight anyone who's interested, it's being carried to the board's special March 30th hearing.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, we'll see you next week. Thank you very much for attending. Any other comments from the board about anything? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Everyone, take care.
Go to sleep, Ryan.
How, how many do you have next week, by the way? I know I have three. Is it, is it?
I think that's it. We'll do this first and then.
Well, we have one extension, but that should be five minutes.
Okay. So then it's honestly the, the two other Linden Lane ones, 198, 178, that should be, they should be very quick. And we'll see about Snowden, but so that, that's, that's, that's not a long evening then. All right, good.
Good luck, man. Talk soon.
All right, good night.
Good night.